Thank you, Eric, for grabbing.
Thank you, Eric. I. My bad.
No worries, sir. We got it.
You had one job, Brian?
No, my one job was to get started, not to remember to record. Yeah, well, yeah, so to bring those who don't know, yeah, this is the Saturday, March 5th, Council Work Session. We are in the process of reviewing community or committee business, and we are discussing the legislative agenda for this work site, this Saturday, this Thursday's meeting. Go ahead, councillor or councilperson Berger.
So our first piece of legislation, and it looks like admin wants us to waive and pass, et cetera. I don't think we would need an emergency appropriation.
Hold on, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Yeah, your microphone's real wonky.
Okay, I'm dead in front of it. I don't know anything I can do different with it.
All right.
How are we? How am I sounding now?
Sound good. It's very directional.
You might just need to sing out, Louise.
I love how his response was just too bad.
I mean, it's just the things on the screen. There's nothing I can do. I don't have an external mic. So it is an increase for storm sewer improvements. It's saying American Rescue Plan Act. Does that mean we're taking American Rescue Plan money and putting it into our sewers?
Okay, so last year, hang on, am I on? Okay, yeah. So last year, we were told we were getting two, we were getting a payment in 2021 and a payment in 2022. This is the 2021 payment that we are moving into the storm sewer to help with the 2021 storm sewer project. The 2022 money is, and I hope I'm saying this right, but the 2022 money is expected. There was a request, and I'm not going to go in detail on that yet, that maybe we will use part of the 2022 money to help purchase, and I'm gonna go ahead and say it, to help purchase some police equipment. So we, that's gonna be a discussion that we're gonna have, but this is for the 2021, putting it in the storm sewer, so we can start paying the bills. And this is part of, I'm just gonna, the American Rescue Act, CARES Act, whatever you want to call it, but it's basically the money from the government that we don't pay back.
Back then, we're just sliding into the fund that we want to use it in.
Yep.
Wonderful. Next. Oh, five, 2022, an ordinance updating the wage and salary ranges and the number of employees in positions, et cetera, et cetera. It's not immediate. I don't have to read it at all. It is, now, I thought we had already changed the police.
We did, so. You're not crazy. We already did this once. Without giving too much personal information, we have an officer that was a sergeant that is now going back to being a patrol officer, and it is, the pay range does not work for him. So it needs to be adjusted to pay him accurately.
Okay. I'm confused by what that means.
So we have somebody that is gonna be on a step, in the step process, that we have somebody that's topped out, which means we can't pay them the salary that they should be making, or the hourly wage that they should be making. When we did these adjustments, we adjusted them through, for the employees that we had, because the employee that has been here the longest is the sergeant, and he is no longer gonna be the sergeant. So his pay range, he tops out. So the pay range is needed adjusted based on years of service.
Is his responsibility is gonna be lessened in a new role?
Correct, but. Yes, but the step that for his amount of time that he's been there is, he has topped out for the amount of time that he's been there. This is our longest-serving officer. So this is just, it just wasn't adjusted. Every other one, every other position was adjusted except for that one, which we didn't raise it high enough.
Because you didn't have.
And I think we're off by, I mean, don't quote me, but I think we're off by like fifty cents an hour, fifty or seventy-five cents an hour.
Okay. Anyone else, anything to say on that one?
Is.
Oh, no, no, no. And the other one is our new fiscal officer, that stuff has been adjusted. That is also on there.
Okay.
And the wording for the positions, because Leah is actually going back to assistant/ clerk of courts, and then he is actually still gonna be the part-time fiscal officer. And then you're gonna see his legislation, and I did clear that with Jesse. He does, we're gonna go ahead and start the readings, do a second reading, and then pass this emergency next time. So we can at least get one reading in.
Would be really good if whatever changes were, at least for our our discussion would be that were highlighted in red.
Perfect. I can see, yeah, I can see if she can do that, just so you guys can see it.
Yeah. That would be great.
Great suggestion.
And we're only waiting the third reading, right? So we're gonna do a second reading on this. We'll have another chance for discussion and all that.
This actually, no, I think this one is wave the readings past because we have him going back to be a patrol officer, and we can't pay him the salary that he is supposed to make for a patrol officer.
On the.
The legislation for Jeff is different.
On the paperwork we have, it is not the case. It is not getting passed until March 24th.
Say that again.
On the actual paperwork in the packet, it is not getting passed until March 24th.
She might, that may be fine, because that may be his first paycheck is being back as patrol. So whatever she has on there would be correct. I was thinking it was going before then, so yeah, that may be accurate. Whatever she put is what she wants.
Okay, so we. Yeah, we have, so we have another opportunity for discussion on this.
Yes.
Yeah. All right, next we have 2022 oh five. This is our, oh, this is a first, familiar. The mayor entered agreement with Frost, Todd Brown for new revision of the Minerva Park zoning code. Didn't we already have this through? Why is this new? No.
You should have got it one reading, I thought.
Yeah, no, this is our third reading on it. I, for somehow I saw February 10th, and I thought March 10th. So I thought we were on our first reading, and, which was weird, because I know I had read it before. And in fact, this is the third reading. This is for the revising the code at the, no more than thirty-five thousand, although Jesse thinks it's gonna be less than that based on the estimated number of hours he thinks it will take.
The vigorous head nodding.
Yes.
Yes, I think it'll be less.
Since this is gonna get passed Thursday, are we all in agreement that this is worth doing and money worth spending?
Yeah.
All right, then we'll move on once I zoom past all the contract information. Okay, and this one I kind of do want to talk about, because this is twenty twenty seven, the pool fee. I am perfect, personally perfectly fine with all the normal stuff. I like the after five, and weekend pass. It is just that honk in two things, holiday, having two days where it costs extra. I don't think two dollars per person extra that day is gonna be worth the inevitable fights we have and people being like, what? It's today, now it's twelve, what? I just don't, I don't think there's value enough to justify those, that happening. And I still am a little, premium pass, what's that now? Getting you, how much of a headache is that gonna be?
I'm all about the premium pass. I'm sorry, I am all about the premium pass.
Okay. Go ahead, why?
Because, well, if you think about the structure of my family, I have a toddler. It's like impossible to wrangle a toddler by myself, and my husband's not always around, so the fact that you get one extra person, you don't have to designate who that person is, so I can bring my best friend. I can bring my mom sometimes. I can bring my mother-in-law sometimes. That really is worth that extra money to me. And the fact that there's like a lounge chair that I can drop all my stuff off on, that's like a guarantee, basically, or we talked about that, like, that is huge for me, and I'm willing to pay all that extra money for it. I'm not the only mom in the village.
A hundred and sixty dollars extra for, well, let's see, what is it for, say, a family of four, two ninety? Goes to four fifty, the hundred and sixty dollars extra that gives you five guest passes to be used. So it's a hundred and sixty dollars more that covers fifty dollars worth of guest passes.
I know, but I'd rather just pay for the convenience and not think about it. You have to think about my finances.
What you're missing is one unnamed guest at any cost, right? So, so, and that's the part that I think.
Oh, I'm sorry, I saw that. That's at the bottom, I saw.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was missing that.
I've always kind of thought would be good. I don't know that it's a hundred and sixty dollars good. The five guest passes, I guess that's, that's fifty of the hundred and sixty dollars, sure. And I don't understand the two guaranteed lounge chairs, because, and I think that would be a a nightmare to manage. Like, I.
Concerned about that, just so you guys are aware.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's, I would. There were, there were some other things we talked about, where you get some free water. I don't know why that's not in here, but.
I didn't list everything on there, because I wanted you guys to talk about it again, because it boils back down to the same thing. Who's gonna keep track of how, it was a conversation that I just had with John, until we kind of clarified everything. Who's gonna keep track of the twenty-four waters? Who's gonna keep track of this? Who's gonna keep? And it's, it's a matter of exactly how you guys want to maintain it. So I, I put the specifics in there. Now, when we go to actually advertise this, you know, these extra perks could be listed in the addendums or anything like that, once we get it situated. So I don't care what we put in there. I put the things in there that I thought were gonna be the main pushes, like, again, the unnamed guest and the five guest passes and the lounge chairs. Again, that's a great perk. The only concern is, you know, and it's not a concern until you see how many people actually sign up for it. If we've got six people that sign up for it, the lounge chair is not gonna be a problem. He can set six or eight chairs out, because the odds of them being there at the same time are pretty slim. If you get a bunch of people that sign up for it, that could be a difference. At that point, you know, his concern is, on Fourth of July, all these, you know, premium passes show up. I mean, how's he gonna tell these people they can't have a chair? So, or, you know, they get a chair, and then who is he gonna, who's he gonna walk over to and say, you can't sit there, but then he doesn't want to stack a chair sitting there that's not being used in case premium. So I think that's where the, the one percent chance that that would happen, I think that's the concern.
Okay.
So if, there, there's not a right answer. So I don't have, that's up to you guys to determine, but knowing that John has to carry it out.
I think there's ways to manage it, right? I mean, we could have signs or special something put on all those chairs that say they're reserved.
Yeah, like all the resorts that we go to, if we do like the, whatever, like, ultimate package or whatever, that's, like, there's a separate private beach or a separate private, like, area, so you could just, like, have like ten that are reserved for blah, blah, blah. That's usually how other places do it, and it doesn't seem to be a big deal.
And it is one of the things that make the premium passes appealing. I don't have to worry about my chair. I don't care how many people's there. When I come there, I know I got one. That's why I paid the money.
Yeah, same. Some of it's just the convenience, right? So now I'm not plugging my chair down there. Yeah, the person, I mean, we charge, what, eighty dollars or sixty dollars for a babysitter? I mean, what if that babysitter changes throughout the year? Does, do you pay eighty dollars for each?
No. Yeah, I would believe, and we probably should check with John, but I believe if you paid for your babysitter pass, then you change babysitters, you just let them, it's, it's just whoever your babysitter is. But, I mean, John would confirm that. So is, here's my question. Is this intention to offer a premium service and therefore charge a premium price? Or is it something that we think this would gain more revenue for the pool?
I think it's a little both.
Because I you know, while, while it is good that the pool brings in revenue, I, I never want to see it as a a revenue stream or a revenue source, right?
I think it's more about breaking even.
Yeah, and I you know, I, this is no hill I'll die on, but I, I feel like it would put, my, my thoughts are, and I'll leave it here, is that having guaranteed lounge chairs or free water for our pool staff to manage will be.
It's not free, paid for it.
Well, free, free at point of service. Right? If we wanna, if we wanna quibble there, but free at point of service, chairs and water, or guaranteed chairs and free at point of service water, is just another thing for our pool staff to manage. And before we go about obligating them to these things, we should make sure that they're ready to do that. There's, there's my thought.
Can someone tell me what, like, because I, I very, I've only a few times been to the pool. What does the software that they're using now? I know they have an iPad, right?
They don't have any.
So what are they doing, like pencil and paper?
They, they have a, someone walks up, and if they are a member, they have a printout of all the members, and they mark down, these members are here by hand on paper. If it's not a member, and it is a, then a payment for a day pass, they count how many people are coming in, and they give them a number, and there's a cash or charge transaction.
Well, I mean, I think it's, it's important that we also stay up with times. But then again, you have to make sure that, that someone's gonna run that and, and be able to do that.
You know, I think the software sounds great, because there's lots of information we could cull from it, right? You know, the, you know, how many, how many people really are coming in with two-year-olds, right? How many people are coming in with three-year-olds, right? Where is the bright line to, to make that break where both reasonable for our, our people coming and fiscally reasonable for the village? Makes great sense. How, when during the day or day passes sold, right? Is a break at five actually doing anybody any good? There's, there's lots of questions that we've always asked that we've never had data on, and software will help us get that data. I am not opposed to software that'll help us get data. I am saying, again, that I don't want to have to have our pool staff, you know, someone sees someone come up to the pool staff and say, hey, I'd like my premium membership water today, and then someone else come up and say, hey, where's my water? That's not a conversation I think these people need to have.
Okay, but, and if we're doing the software, if we would do the software, there is always, like, in any basic CRM, there is a note. And then if they say, well, where's my water? Where's your premium membership, bud? You know what I mean?
Yeah, and again, it's not a.
But I, I get, I get your point one hundred percent, but if they're gonna be trained on the software, why not train them on how to add notes, too? I mean, that's, that's all, that's my only point.
I hear you.
Software could manage the, the water part of it, where we just give them a credit for that on their account, and then they come off as, as they use them. I think it's, you know, we're not saying that we're offering unlimited premium passes. I think we came up with either ten or twenty. You know, I think some of the thought on the price is that we could potentially purchase some extra lounge chairs, because we do need to replace some stuff, and that would help cover the expense of that as well. You know, it's not something, if it doesn't work, I mean, we don't have to offer it again next year.
I think that we could explore this. I, I think this is a good idea overall.
I mean, people are gonna vote with their money, right?
Mm-hmm.
So.
Honestly, this is like, if we have a premium pass, that's probably the only reason I would buy a pass. Otherwise, it's just too much of a hassle for me to wrangle all this, figure out logistics, pay for this, pay for that, get enough cash on time. It's just not gonna happen for me. So that's like one, one person you're gonna lose, or one family you're gonna lose.
I can't argue with what you're gonna do. It seems weird that I don't understand all the money wrangling you're talking about when you just buy a pass and show up.
I just think I would rather pay more money for the convenience and not worry about it. Exactly. This is what I mean. I would. Um. I did close the door. Um. I would rather pay for the convenience to not deal with all of those. Um. And that is worth a lot of money to me. So I am not the only one. I can guarantee you that.
All right, well, that seems to be essentially decided, other than the details of how we're gonna do the chairs and other amenities. Um, once again, I will bring up the second thing I brought up, the two-dollar bump place on two days over the summer. I think is just gonna be more troublement for, for day passes there.
You know, I think it's, I think if you look around at other municipalities, they do something similar. So it's just us following suit.
Yeah. Yeah.
Jason, correct me if I'm wrong. I think the thought process was, is like, sometimes we're overcrowded on those days, so it's a way to just make sure that it's enjoyable for everybody.
I, I mean, I would hope that that's a holiday for our staff, and we are paying them holiday pay on that, you know, time and a half is normal on a holiday. I don't know if that's true. But that would help also, you know, cover that for those people that want those day passes. All three of those this year also fall on a Monday.
It's not two. I've been saying two, and I was reading it incorrectly. All right, anyone else with anything to say on that? All right, let's move on to what I believe should be the last piece of legislation for Thursday. Appointing a fiscal officer and declaring an emergency. This is our restructuring. Tiffany, you wanna go over the restructuring one last time, because I know it's still convoluted in my head a bit. But I think Tiffany's on the move and not gonna be able to do that. Does anyone pay more attention than I do and want to go over that restructuring?
Restructuring. Um. The fiscal officer one, the resolution. When he, Eric, do you want to speak to that, or I guess I can give some? I can give what I.
Are we talking about Jeff?
Yeah.
Okay, so, basically, we have, Leah is overloaded, simple as that. She is doing too many jobs, and with COVID, it worked completely perfect. But now that we're coming back to having the new building and doing all the different financing things that need to be done, it's, it's just overwhelming. So we are going back to getting a previous employee that is familiar with the village and has actually done our, our, all of our stuff. Oh my God, I cannot talk with this thing. Um, the we're bringing him back. So we are gonna be doing, paying him a part-time salary. Leah is still going to be his assistant, so anytime he's on vacation or anytime he needs help with anything. We are also bringing back pay, we are getting rid of Pay Corps, and we're going back and doing in-house, because we're bringing him back in, we're gonna start doing in-house payroll again, because it, that's just been, it's great when it's great, and when it's not, it's not. Simple as that. So we're bringing him back in, we're gonna pay him his part-time hours. We will no longer have Kim, so that is gonna be gone. So he will be taking Kim's position, but he will be working in-house, and he will be working more hours, and he will be more hands-on, doing payroll, doing all of that type of stuff. But now we will have a backup, which is what we've never had before, because Leah is able to do everything. So that's, that's pretty much the quick version of it's too much for them with the new building and the financing and everything else that's going on in there. It's just too much. The officers are back to writing tickets all the time, where COVID, of course, you know, they, it was a little bit lower, the amount of things that she needed to do. So right now, we're just, it's just too much for one person to be doing three jobs. But we knew that. We did know that.
Real quick question here. You kept saying a part-time, in the legislation, it says will serve as a full-time fiscal.
I will get that fixed. I thought I did not fix that. I actually took the old legislation and redid it, so thank you for noting that. He is gonna be part-time.
Understandable. I thought that might be what the case was.
Correct. You are correct. So I will, I know, I will send, Eric, if you can remember on Monday, too, but I will try to send Barb an email, because that is my error, because I'm the one that did that one.
I have my email up right now, since I'm reading regulation off my thing. I will send Barb a little notice on it.
That would be awesome. And then also, just as an FYI, the he will have the opportunity to buy into the insurance as well. So just, I mean, I'm just pointing that out, because with him being a part-time, he won't get it, but he will have the opportunity to purchase.
And it'll be that basic coverage that can only be for him and not family and everything that's passed with that.
Correct. Correct. And he will have to pay fifty percent and all of that. So yes. If he chooses to. Yes.
I can also throw in there, Jeff was our fiscal officer when I was on council the first time, and his work was always exceptional.
Yeah, our, our interview went extremely well. He is really excited to get back in there.
Well, the gentleman's before my time, but I'm looking forward to working with him and meeting him then.
And that's about all I have for that, and that's really all I have for legislation. So.
Do you wanna?
Move on from me unless Eric's gonna chime in about something, but.
Yeah, sorry, Mark. There was another piece, I didn't, I didn't hear it. She sent an updated one. It was six twenty-two, six twenty twenty-two, dealt with the amphitheater. Jesse had sent that over to us earlier in the week. I didn't fire that around yet, because I'm working on filling it in, so you'll have it Monday. But it is on, it is on the agenda, so I wanted to talk briefly about it with everyone. Specifically, we, and this'll, this'll kind of interweave into our, our whole building situation, so I can give everybody kind of a combined update at this stage. First and foremost, bids did not go anywhere as expected for our three-week period. There are a number of reasons for that, but we, we got one crazy, out-of-whack bid from some Northwest GCs for about four million dollars, totally off the train. And then we had a thermostat guys come in and just give us a bid for the thermostats, and we're like, what the heck? So, so. So we will also be sending you, probably by Thursday, Jesse and I will work on it. Just a, you'll need to officially reject all bids. And then our strategy is to, we're in the middle of gathering some data between myself and the architect and shaking the tree to get our selected GCs back in there to bid, because there's any number of them that, between myself and the architect, have worked with who are really good. The problem out there is kind of multifold. A lot of these guys have a ton of estimators, but they're all slammed. They can't produce a bid for us in, you know, a, a three-week period. So we're gonna extend our, our, our next bid, probably, we're thinking sixty days to give people a significant amount of time. We're also hearing certain things come back regarding prevailing wage, which we have to delve into a little bit. I just think that's part of, they just don't have enough time to bid, because they have to rely on their subs to get them bids back, too, but prevailing wage is not really so much of an issue in Franklin County, so I, we're gonna have to look into that particular one. I don't know how big of a deal that is. What is a big deal is just the timeframes that these folks need to properly bid things. So that's number one. And as we get people kind of on board with, hey, we're giving you two months, please get us something. I, I think we'll get a few more, and we'll get some reasonable bids. We certainly don't expect it to be four million. Prices are not that out of line yet. That guy was just, you know, he wanted to throw something in there, because he had a lot of assumptions he made, and he didn't want to spend the time on it. So all comes back to spending some time. So that said, that presents us a little bit of a issue with our timing, so. And I'll get, this was related to the amphitheater as well. So what we, let me jump back to that. So obviously, when we got our, when we get our TIF funding, whatever instrument we choose to use, or however we go through that process to get the money in-house, we, because we won't have that in hand, we need to get an application back. Well, we need to fill out, finish our application and have a council, a key part of that is councils acceptance that they are going to move forward with the project. Now, what we basically presented here is a an ordinance resolution that says, if then, if we get the money, we're, we'll put it into, you know, we'll put it into this account, and we're totally going along with that, because we have deadlines with the amphitheater application process with the state. So that's what this, that's what this piece of legislation is for. We can take it through three readings and meet our deadlines, no problem. So our first reading is gonna be this Thursday, and then we'll finish up the third reading in April, and then we'll get all that submitted to the state. So that's for that particular project. Now, this all weaves back into the financing for the project, which, to give everyone a continuing update on that, is that I had a very long conversation with all of our finance people, our finance advisor, Mr. David Tiggett, Emmett, Emmett Kelly, and then I think David Rogers, Jesse was also on the line as well, too. So everybody was moving through this process, and we actually are gonna have a bank that's going to, its first merchant is, is you know, Mr. Tiggett knows them well, and they are interested, and can, can also give us an option for financing. Now, of course, the, they can move a bit quicker than, say, the Port Authority, or, you know, you know, a regular government entity can. So we're, we're gonna get some information back, but it is quite possible, because of our timeframes with by the time we accept something for the building, it's gonna be four or five months down the road, right? By the time we get through that process, get it through council, get everything. Get it through council, get everything accepted. It's going to be some significant time has gone by for twenty-twenty-two. In light of this though, money has got to move, financing instrument has to move at a different rate speed because as we know, there's going, there's a lot of changes going on in the market. Crazy stuff from war in Europe to gas prices to the Fed, it's going to start pounding up interest rates, which can potentially affect instruments in different ways. And that Fed stuff is going to happen in two weeks. If we go, we'll have our information back from first merchant probably in the next week. Um, they're going to work on, you know, and there's, there's a few variables. Obviously they need to give us a term, you know, as far as they can do twenty-five years. What, at what rate, you know, will that be? What can they offer us? So they, they're going to put those numbers together. We're going to get it to you folks to look at. Um, they can go ahead and lock that rate for forty-five days. Once they, once they, you know, can come to some agreement with it and show us that it's, it's, you know, it's a good deal. Uh, once they lock that prior to any, you know, say the Fed acting or anything like that, we, we have forty-five days to utilize that. So there'll be enough time to take it through council, um, through, through a, a three-meeting process. May need to schedule an extra meeting in there depending on the timeframe. So we'll discuss that. Um, but what I'm saying is that probably if it's a good rate, good term and everyone likes it, you're going to have to go ahead and secure the money first. Before we get to the bid section, because it's several months down the road. And there's other things obviously to work on. Uh, and we have more, you, you have time to utilize that money and, and Emmett will prepare something just to kind of go through the it, obviously, as I brought up to them, you know, my conversation, I said, obviously the worst case scenario that the council needs to know about is, well, what happens if actually all hell breaks loose and we just can't do the building? We don't anticipate that. But that's a worst case scenario and we want to have that information in front of you. So you can weigh your risks properly, uh, with the advisement of your uh, professionals. So he'll have something regarding that too. But he, he basically on the phone, he was like, it's not really that huge of a thing. We have, you got up to three years to utilize the money, um, you know, and there may be some penalties involved. We'll talk to the different people involved, but you know, you obviously can use the money for multiple things. Even if you have a building, I'm sure you, as a side note, I'm sure we've got a roadway. We've got to build somewhere. So, so quite frankly, uh, you know, I'm not, I just want to bring that up as a, a, a note so that you have all the information, especially of what we're considering. But I'm also like, Emmett, I'm, I'm probably not as concerned about that, knowing that there's plenty of projects and we'll find a way to use TIF money one way or the other, especially if we get a good rate, um, and good term. Um, so that's, that's, that's kind of where we're at in this whole thing. The money will have to be taken first is what we think because building won't be agreed to later. Uh, and that's why the amphitheater is in front of you too, because we need to move on the state's timeframe before we, you know, so we don't lose that opportunity to get it in kind. So I'll take any questions. I'm sorry for all the information at once.
Hang on, I just want to point out, I think I'm going to say something because I'm getting ready to log off. Sorry, I'm bored. Um, the other part to that is, um, Eric and I had talked about it a little bit and you know, the lake for some people is way more of a priority than even the building. Um, and that is one thing, getting this money done and moving forward and getting everything, that is a project that we can go full force and get moving on. So it's, it wouldn't be the end of the world to get this money and get some of these other projects started while we continue to work towards the building.
Eric, my, my one question, and I'm pretty sure you said it, but you know, my attention span and what have you. The instruments that we're talking about are still based on future revenue of the TIF, right?
That is absolutely correct. And since it's a TIF in place, that was why first merchant, it's, it's, it's not a conceptual. It's an actual generating revenue.
The only thing we're really talking about is engaging in financing before we have the building plan finalized. Uh, but we have every intention of finalizing that and yeah, okay. I understand it now. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Any other questions from any council members?
Should we have a list of priorities? That's like what's most to least important to us if this doesn't go through in a timely manner?
Um, we do have a, and we'll find it. Um, so Jesse and I'll get together on this. We do have, and we need to look at it anyways. We do have a list of TIF priorities that, because that had to be authorized as part of that. We, I believe a building is on it, but we have any number of infrastructure, roadways, sewers, uh, projects that are, were on that and conceived back in twenty fifteen, sixteen timeframe. Um, we will need to, I think we'll need to add the amphitheater, but that's just an amendment, uh, I believe Jesse, correct?
I know that isn't on it. So we'll just have to amend the TIF ordinance.
Copy. And we'll bring that all in due time to you.
And uh, real quick, Eric, you were talking about state timelines and whatnot for the amphitheater. Are we then pretty sure we're going to get a matching grant or what have you from the state to uh, revitalize that as a whatever historic improvement?
We, blah, blah, blah. Yeah, we were already pre-approved, um, to have up to a hundred thousand dollars of matching grant money. We've pretty much finalized our cost. We, we will come in under the hundred grand. Uh, it'll be close because once we keyed in a few, we have to spend a certain percentage on ADA stuff, but we'll, we'll be up right around eighty-eighty-five. I think at the end of the day, we had to make a few guesses and get a few conceptual things and construction costs changed, but it'll, it'll be roughly there. And the state will, it's a reimbursement grant. So that's why they want to see that. They typically like to see that council has appropriated and accepted i- if by ordinance, but this will hopefully solve that particular conundrum since we won't have that till we have money in the bank and it'll be, it'll be close. Let's put it that way. So.
So we're looking at this project being about a hundred and seventy thousand. If the state taking half of it then?
Correct. State will reimburse us for half.
Sounds like, uh, sounds like a nice, uh, use of funds.
Are there any other projects we want to consider or anything like that? Should we talk to planning and zoning about it?
Well, let's, you, you, you can. Let's get you the list first. You can see what's on the list. And then, uh, then we can, if there's things you want to add to it, obviously we can entertain that and get those handled when we do the amphitheater.
There's been a lot of talk about, um, a cut through. So maybe, I don't know if that's on there or not, but.
Actually, yes, and we can discuss that. So we, we have put a few things in place moving towards that end, uh, which includes easement as we go through the, you know, that were access easements that for eventual pathways. Um, getting you from your side of town to the rest. Um, and we'll be proceeding with some, uh, other pre-in kind of improvement projects. But I know that one thing planning is only is already talking about, uh, as Brady has done a fine job in guiding us through this process. Um, and I give credit to Donna for getting us started originally too. We, we will have an amphitheater part two. Uh, that application will come, you know, because the state's calendar is June, July timeframe. We actually already had a meeting with Mary Lightbody who came in, um, and she is going to be fully supportive of our continuing efforts to get the amphitheater, you know, projects constructed and approved. Um, even with all the changes in the maps going on this year, we not, I don't know if even she'll be our representative come next year, but right now they're, she's our rep. And it's just, she's going to help us. Very nice woman enjoyed our meeting. Uh, but she basically has said, uh, that well, what we'll do is we'll put in our second application. Um, you know, timing with the state. That's why we have to have this first one. Cause we, we had a timeframe and we're kind of at the end of it for the first one to make sure it gets in there. So we can guarantee that we're going to get our money. Otherwise I'll take our money away and reallocate it to the next stage. But we want, we're basically going to add a boardwalk. We'll just call it kind of that gets us across the lake to pathway, um, and other amphitheater continuing improvements that are all interrelated, right? So that will, that will allow us to get a, uh, uh, we, we've even talked about there's ODNR has got a grant that's non, that's completely paid for. So non-reimbursable. So we'll find our best way to put in, uh, whichever application we need to, uh, to make the best gains for the village.
Um, couple of quick things on that and maybe one more question. Uh, one, I don't believe Lightbody will be our rep after this year. I know that she's in her second term. I believe she gets unlimited out at the end of this.
Yeah, the state house gets two, I believe.
Yeah. So I think, I, I know I've had yards in my sign for her twice. So I think she's getting term limited out unless she runs for senate. And, ah, shelter house. Uh, what news of that?
We're probably going to have to put out an RFP on that. Mayor and I were talking about that the other day. Um, it's just because our, although the money has been allocated, um, you know, in the, you folks put that, I believe into the, uh, appropriated. We're going to double check that too. You may need to reappropriate it because I think it was a twenty-twenty-one item, but it, I don't know if it's still sitting there or not. So either way, we'll come back, maybe put the money back where it belongs, you know, for the parks. But we're going to have to definitively RFPs, uh, the shelter because it's very close to fifty grand. And given the construction items, you know, in, in our rules, we're just going to have to put it out for, you know, short and sweet RFP and see who bids on it. We, we know Morton's building systems will give us something. So, and we know what they are. So, uh, we'll see who else sends us something.
How does everybody feel about like having a joint meeting with planning and zoning once in a while? I know everybody's busy and planning and zoning is busy, but maybe we, they can join a planning meeting like once every three, four months, something not. Should we talk about that? Yeah. So the, the main thing, okay. So the main thing with planning and zoning, and that's entirely up to you guys, but the reason for the council liaison is to bring back all of the information. So we don't have to have an additional meeting. Again, for the same people that are already there. Um, that's kind of the purpose behind having myself on there. Um, just as an FYI, there's actually three of us that are in those meetings every single week or every single time. So there's myself, Eric and Brian Wolf are in those particular meetings and it's our job to bring everything back to you guys and just kind of tell you where they are and what they're doing and all of that good stuff. Um, we do have recordings of, of the planning and zoning meetings as well. Anybody is more than welcome to those. Um, we do take minutes from the planning and zoning minutes as well. So if anybody wants to get those minutes, um, Beth McFarland has actually been doing them. Um, so which is, uh, is, is now being done, I should say. Um, so again, if it's something you guys want to add another meeting, that's entirely up to you guys, but that's kind of our job to bring the information back to you guys with the additional minutes, with the additional recordings and things like that. So I'm not against a meeting. But that is the purpose of the liaison and myself.
And I will simply point out that obviously if anyone wants to attend, just let us know ahead of time. Uh, Brady will, you know, add, he will either bring you up to the table, the chair can officially invite you to the table, or we can make an agenda item for anything you want to discuss. So just let us know and we're happy to make things happen.
As long as the minutes are on, I just feel like I'm kind of out of the loop. You, you guys know, I want to know like everything. So like, I don't know. That's more of a, I just want to know exactly what's going on. And if you are able to go, I mean, I did that also, like when I was on council, I mean, I, I couldn't go to all of them, but I just stopped in every couple of times. And yeah, you really do get an idea of what's going on. Um, but if there's like some crazy, you know, big thing going on, there's no reason not to kind of have a merged meeting or something like that. So, but yes, the minutes are there. Um, I'll make sure that they're getting posted to the website, making sure that, you know, we have them where you guys can actually find them easily. Um, I believe they're being posted there, but maybe that's something that's not being done accurately because we don't have a process for it yet. Cause again, Beth has just started doing it. Yeah, I didn't see it. Over the last couple of months. Yeah, but and Wednesdays are tight for me. So that's why I'm asking. Like that's, that's like the one day where I can't. It's hard. Yeah. Yeah. So. All right, guys, I am out. Um, I'm going to have my phone on me for the next thirty minutes. Uh, well, we're going to be on the plane, but if anybody has any questions, text me. Eric, the only, there was one more thing I wanted to just say, talk to them about. Now I can't think what it was. I was going to ask him about streets too, a little bit more of a streets update from his perspective. Eric won't really have much of the streets. I do try. That's the only thing I really try to not get him totally involved with. Um, the main thing with streets is I did sign the contract for, no, I didn't. It's on the list because we can't sign the contract for Resource International. So once we're able to sign that contract, it will be on the list for that. Um, the, you have the update for the East Shore Court. And then you and I are just going to have to get together as soon as I get back because there's some updates and maybe we just need to have another meeting with Mike. Um, to go over the Jordan Road, like the backyards of all of that. The problem with that right now is we don't, I don't have a lot of information because they are collecting information. They're working with Columbus. They're working with, we have to, and before we can do anything with that pipe, Yasmine Market has to be on board and willing to, or we're going to have to put the bill, all of that. There's, there's a lot of missing parts to that that are still being worked out. Um, it's going to move forward because it, I mean, we've been talking about it. It's not an issue. But there's just a lot that Mike's working on before he can really bring it back to us and say, this is what I need to do next. Yeah, I asked for an update about that as well. Yeah. Real quick. And he didn't, he said like Columbus gave us some information, but it wasn't like anything that we could use. Right. Um, my only thing is like, I'm worried somebody's going to hurt themselves in their backyard. So like that's, you know. So. Yeah, the sinkholes are, I mean, the sinkholes are real. I mean, we have probably three of them now back there and you know, you have to take your lawnmower pretty far around, around them and all of that. I mean, it's, it's, it's no joke. I mean, they're. Terrifying, actually. Yeah. The concerns that they have, I mean, I ha, I, I, I can vouch for them. I have them too. Um, so it is something that again, Jesse, myself and Eric will be meeting with Yasmine to see where we are with that, but that's not going to stop. I mean, I'm going to say this, it's not going to stop the project at this point. We'll do what we need to do. And handle that on the backend if we need to.
Yeah.
Because this does need to be forward.
If Yasmine's not cooperative and they've gone through some internal changes, so they may or may not be. Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll have to re, we'll have to lean back on their, their.
Exactly. Yeah. I mean, my thing is, sorry, it's, my thing is like, can we get somebody out there to like, at least assess it like an engineer or something and be like, yeah, this is a sinkhole, like stay away from it, or this is how far away you should stay away from it for now while we're working on it. Just something, you know, like.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't that already happen at some?
No, I know he was checking. He was checking to find out if there's somebody like mine are just holes. Like, I mean, not to be dumb. I don't feel like they're, I don't know. I'm, I'm not an engineer. So I have no, I, I just stay away from them. I cut around them. Um, but our backyard is so flooded. I don't cut, most of the time I don't cut back there anyways because you can't. So, I mean, I'm, I'm a good, good, good couple of feet away from it. So, um, I, I don't have a good answer for that yet. I know Mike, we, I know Mike was asked about it. I know we've talked about it. Um, I know he was going to ask around to see, but it's kind of, unless you want to dig around it, there's really not a I, I'm not sure. I'm not exactly sure what we need to do around it to find out. Right. Okay. So let's coordinate something. So we can like at least talk about it in detail. Cause. I'll be back Wednesday. So maybe on Thursday or Friday. Actually, I won't. Um, Thursday might be good or the following week anytime. The following is not good for me, but Thursday, let's do. Yeah. I'll try to do Thursday. Yeah, just, yeah, my calendar. Just send me a message and let me know like when or what or whatever. And then we'll figure and see if we need to ask Mike any questions, but hopefully we'll get some more updates on the East Shore Court and then work coordinating with. Um, there was somebody that had their window busted from a piece of equipment. I reached out. Um, Adam reached back out and somebody was supposed to go back, meet with them yesterday. So I, I don't have a res, I don't have an update on that. And then just so you guys know, we do have a sixteen hundred dollar roof repair probably being done today. There was a leak right above the server. Um, so it was not an option. It had to be fixed. Um, as much as we didn't want to spend money on the new bill or on the current building, we don't have a choice because the equipment is a lot more than sixteen hundred dollars.
And get a new building quick enough.
Okay. So that is an FYI. All right, guys. Have a safe flight. Bye.
See you, Mayor.
See ya. Have a good trip.
Hey, um, Eric, did you have more things that you wanted to, uh, update council on?
Um, I think, I think those are the ma, obviously those are the major items, building, financing, amphitheater, had all weaves together. We've got a, got a few pieces of homework. We'll get the list out to folks. You'll see some, um, legislation come through for Thursday. I'm just trying to think off the top of my head. I, I don't have anything else. Crazy. I mean, this standard stuff, schools are being built, the little daily things, you know, like telling them, hey, guys, get out there. Like yesterday, I left the village. I inspected the roadways. They need to get their street cleaner who was delayed and, you know, there's a lot of water, you know, people are unhappy, obviously, you know, who are back up to the school, then the elementary school specifically. Uh, because they have not, they, they're a few, just a few months away from, um, finished grading and that will, especially with the one gentleman, I know he's frustrated. It's not getting in his house, but it is crawling up into it, especially the amount of water coming down. There's crawling up into his yard and he's, he's, you know, sending me videos and I to look, we're almost there. So if you hear from him, just know that we're, everyone's aware, uh, we already made the school kind of pre-final grade at any ways to try to alleviate him, which did help. Uh, but as we're getting into spring, I fully expect a lot more water to come down from the sky a few times. So. But we'll, we'll get there.
And Eric, you know, we have that email from a resident concerned about a stream. I just didn't know where to like, uh, for lack of a better non-medical term, I didn't know where to triage that. So like.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that from you, you and Jason. Uh, not, not a big deal. That just, that, that's again, it's within, you know, an unimproved right-of-way plat. It is ours. Um, it is not going to reach the houses before it covers the road. So I know that again, the stream, those little streams and creeks are going to overflow their banks. Whenever we have these large events, people get nervous and they see that happening, it will go away. And like you said, it was leaving trash behind. And that, by the way, is a big problem. Anytime we have these events and that's why we have so much crap in our, uh, lakes. And you know, with this money and some good lake engineering, we will mitigate that significantly. Um, down the road. So I'm looking forward to that as well.
I guess my question is just like, who, who actually is like in charge of that? Like, is it streets? Like, is it community? Is it?
Are we talking about the stream or the lake?
Uh, it's the stream, I guess. I didn't know. I mean, it's not a street. So I didn't know how to answer that.
Yeah. So streams, yeah. So just feel free on those. You, you did the right thing. Forward it to the mayor and myself and you know, we'll be happy to address any maintenance because that's kind of a maintenance issue. And if it's, if it's kind of like a late cleanup day or a, a, if we've got enough garbage spilling out in places, you know, you we'll either get some big ones with our maintenance guy or we'll, uh, we can happily add it to a volunteer situation.
Yeah. I mean, that's how I answered it. I just didn't know. Cause she was like, are you in charge of that? And I was like, honestly, I don't think so, but I don't want to give you the wrong answer. You know what I mean? So, okay. Yeah. Awesome. I really appreciate all, everything you're doing.
No problem. Um, and if they're, happy to take any other questions in these. I, there was one other item and I think Nikki, you dealt with it, a community. Um, I can answer your questions now or I can send you an email concerning your survey.
I'll talk about.
I'll talk about, you can talk about anything if you have anything to say, yeah.
Sure. Um, so to answer your question, um, the, the survey, the way we handled it for residents several years back was that we had them, there was an option, uh, for them to fill out a hard copy, drop it off to us and come into the, uh, village. They could print it and we would, we would manually put that data into the, into the system. We, we, we got it off to our guy, to Pete, who did all of that. And he inputted the data. So one way or the other, we'll, we'll make it happen. And there was only a few, there may have been eight, nine of them total, but yeah, there's a few that want to do it that way.
We just wanted to make sure that those people had an option as well, not cut, you know, cut everybody off that's not.
No.
So I appreciate that rapid response very much so.
Um, I have a quick question for Jesse, just like a, just a point of information. When we signed that contract with, uh, Frost Brown Todd for, um, changing the village code, like, do we have any input into what we think is important? Or do you guys just like do it?
Yeah, okay. No, no, so we, uh, in the letter that's attached that we committed to like, I don't know, at least three or four public meetings. And so, so we'll do those, we'll host those, uh, or you guys will host those. You're absolutely welcome to attend. I can give updates at our, at, at each meeting as it's going along, but I, I mean, absolutely, the more feedback, the better.
Okay, yeah.
And planning and zoning has to be part of that, so you'll definitely have public meetings. So it won't be, there won't be an issue. You, you, we will get your money's worth out of Jesse for public meetings.
Okay, yeah, because I just don't want to like cut out some things that I think are valuable, like one, family homes. Um, things like that, but also obviously we want to add in some stuff and clarify some things that we have been going through. So, okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Sure, while you're answering questions, when, when are we getting the official findings of council from the fence permit appeal?
Oh, uh, yes, that's, we are sending out a letter for that per Jesse's instruction, which he can detail. So, Jesse, do you want to explain your strategy on that?
Sure. So, we're going to send a letter, uh, and I have it, Eric's going to put like two things in. We just need to fill out a couple of blanks, put it on Minerva Park Letterhead and have John or Eric send it, uh, that basically says this was the final order of it. We denied the appeal. That starts the thirty day window to appeal. And I figured rather than waste time and, uh, you know, go through a lengthy review of the entire minutes, draft findings of fact. You know, we can wait to do that until there is an appeal. If there is an appeal, there's no need to have it. So we'll send out the letter, start the timeline, be done with it and, and see if an appeal comes.
Oh, I mean, is there going, what is, what's the likelihood?
I, I'm, I tend to think it's pretty slim. I heard from the appellant, uh, I don't, she's represented anymore. Uh, at least by the same attorney that she had. So, I mean, I tend to think it's pretty slim. To, to go through the hassle of going down to common police court and continuing the, the fight, so.
Yeah, I, I think it would be something to pursue through Franklin County, it seems like.
It is. Yep, yep, that's their next steps under the, uh, administrative appeal chapter of chap, uh, twenty-five oh six in the revised. Uh, that's the only, only method available.
Very good. Anybody have other things they need to call out, bring up? New business, old business, now's your opportunity.
Hey, I have something actually. So, um, there's been some conversations around garbage cans in the MI section. And the size of the garages and how small they are in order to put your cars in there and the garbage cans. And, uh, fines being levied, uh, or notices at least going out. Um, so I just kind of wanted to bring that up if maybe we want to talk about that. Or changing it, because I think right now it says something about not being able to be seen from the street. Um, and a lot of residents kind of put them on the side or trying to.
So, yeah, Jason, let me, I'll address that for you real quick. We had just talked about that in-house, uh, the other day with the zoning officer. We weren't, we obviously have some higher priorities, not, but I'm taking phone calls as is John about, you know, people are complaining about the neighbors, the neighbors are calling saying, my neighbor's yelling at me, you know, what is the deal? So minimally, I think we're going to end up putting something in the, um, next newsletter, just to let people know what the current code says and that they need to put them in or on the side. Now, the trouble is, you know, Jason living there and my brother owns a house there too. We very much encourage porches and majority of houses have, houses have porches. So one of the complaints I'm getting from folks is that my neighbor doesn't put it in the garage. They put it on the side. Now it's not hidden. It needs to stay hidden. So they could put, you know, a fence up, you know, a little, little section of fence and a lot of people do that. However, the complaints are from people in a, in, in an adjacent porches. I've got to look at that and it smells and I can't enjoy my porch. So that's our conundrum with the way that, that typically would be handled. So, I feel them. I used to own it in my house and the garages are a little small, uh, on the sides. And I, this time didn't, did allow a bump out, which some people took, some people didn't. As I advised my brother when he built his house, he's a single guy, no kids. He should take that and he, he passed and then he wished he did it. Even though he, you know, I, I think that was just part of the thing. And, and in my old, in my house, I had to put the big city of Columbus, uh, can all the way in the front and kind of pull it out. There, there is enough room lengthwise, unless you've got a giant SUV that you could put it in there with two vehicles. And unfortunately, as I found, being an early homeowner with multiple children, you kind of end up sacrificing one half of the garage anyways. Because, you know, everyone really needs a three-bay garage. For, for tammy, for, I mean, that's really what it comes down to and you just don't have it. So, so it, it is a challenge, basically what I'm saying. And it, it's something we'll have to just address as communication. And, you know, obviously we'll be looking at the code overall. Um, and we can, again, this is one of those detail items, um, that everybody can discuss. At, at the moment, it's on the books and we'll do our best to kind of handle it, um, as we're moving forward.
Okay. Um, to preempt some of these questions, is there a possibility, because I was looking into this, because, um, for like, our air conditioner is ugly and I was going to cover it. But basically, can we like, do like, hey, here's a, a village approved solution, like on Wayfair, they have this like trellis thing to cover your trash can or whatever, like this is something that's approved. Can we do that? Is that like something we want to do?
So, so the council with, the council may adopt, um, specific requirements related, especially to the MI subdivision. It's in, it's in a planned district and there is a specific set of development texts associated with it. Council has opted to address some items in this text over the, since the beginning of the MI development from seventeen on. Some of that is like, you know, fences in, in the corner lots, you know, is a good example. Um, we have a large fence against the rear, the south, uh, and so we addressed some code in that and what people could do with our fence, we're not do with our fence. Yada, yada. If we were to, you know, and you, you could also dictate types of fences, council passed on that some time ago. But you could definitively, long story short, dictate something for them to use in the code, if that's what you want to do. Um, and I would say much like, although my recommendation, you know, wasn't acted on. I'm a fan of, uh, in these subdivisions of, of having some aesthetic, um, requirements, because otherwise you, you get something that gets out of line somewhere and, and, and most people don't like it. Now, beauty is eye of the beholder, but, and again, you don't allow chain fence, chain link fences in the, in the new subdivision, even though it's in the old subdivision. And there's, there are reasons for that aesthetically, right? Um, you could adopt a certain choice set. You can use A, B, or C. We did that with the wind screens on our fence and said you have to have, you know, a windscreen covers a certain way, has a certain opacity. So you did set down rules. And, and I can, uh, it might be helpful, again, one of the other things we can send around to council is a copy of the, the development text as it stands. So you'd be happy to, it's a couple of pages, happy to peruse that, um, and see what I'm talking about. And then we can, we can add things to it over time. So, and then if you want to adopt it for the whole village, that's where we get into the, the code as a, as a whole. Uh, adaptation standpoint.
Sometimes it's like, I feel like if I were like limited in my options, because this is like what the new code was, and sometimes it's, it's good to offer a solution. So that way people know, oh, okay, well, this isn't that as bad as I thought, instead of being like, well, what am I supposed to do now?
Yeah, you may certainly require that and then we can put that into a newsletter and say, hey, here's your choices, A, B, C. Just be aware, this is what the code says. Uh, pick one of these. You can find it at Lowe's Home Depot, online, Amazon, yada, yada.
Anybody else have input on that?
As far as that goes, I would prefer a list of, hey, here are some suggested things that work. Rather than a, these are your options.
Yeah, the wording is, I'm totally open to that.
Hey, here's some ideas. You could, you know, this or that or that, they're cheap, they're affordable and they would work. Rather than you have to have a thing that is, you know, a lattice that has spaces less than two inches.
Oh, no, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm just saying like, hey, this is an idea for you. So you don't have to like come up with it yourself. Or like, these are the kind of bushes that grow fast and are pretty, like, you know, like cost effective that you can plant here too, something like that. Just so it's like people like have an idea of a solution too, instead of just feeling like they have to do an extra thing. Um, Jason, I would love your input because obviously you're, you're the one.
Fortunately, I did purchase the bump out on my house, so I do have that extra two feet. Um, but, um, yeah, I think it would be nice to have some, uh, approved or, um, recommendations maybe. Um, on what would be pleasing from the street, um, for the community. I know a lot of people have put like a concrete pad, um, you know, some people are putting the, the pathway to the backyard. Cause they put the fence in and they've added a concrete pad there to kind of store garbage cans and things like that. But, um, just want to make sure that we can address it for this side. Cause it, it's come up a few times and Eric, it sounds like you guys are getting a lot of it too, so.
Correct. Well, we'll work through it.
Okay, I would, I would like us, I would suggest we stay away from language like approved or recommended. Right? Um, because there's the other side of those words is that anything else isn't necessarily approved. Or, you know, I, I don't, I don't, that, that's not, I think, the business that we're in here. Uh, but examples is okay. Like here are things that are examples of, of the, of the behavior we are aiming for.
How about, I like the word solutions.
Uh, I, that is weird for me too, to be honest, from a gut check, yeah. Because there, but that, that's just me. I mean, if someone wants to go and draft a thing, we can all.
We can really work on verbiage. I don't think the issue is like, I'm, the whole point of the whole thing is, I'm not trying to make somebody do it with option one, two, or three, or else. The whole point is, hey, this is a problem. We've come up with some solutions, you know, take it or leave it, but here are some easy options. We already kind of did some of that homework for you, so you don't have to worry about it. Right?
I feel like the word solution also bakes in the same problems as approved and recommended.
Interpreted more as requirement when we say that. That's so from a language standpoint, we would use the word suggested, I believe. And, um, you know, because we say things like shall, will, can, you know, in legislation, should. So we'll, 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 we'll match it up appropriately at the time.
Sure. I mean, I'm not, I'm not going to get hung up on words. I just want some people to feel included. That's the whole point.
Okay, any, anybody else have anything more new, different, new, old? Woody anecdote? If not, then I am going to call this to a close. Going once, going twice. Everybody have a beautiful weekend.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good one.
Thank you.
Beautiful day, seventy degrees.